Recording in progress.
Good evening and welcome to tonight's city council meeting. Today is Tuesday, February the seventh, two thousand and twenty-three, the time is now six P. M. Regular meeting of this city council, the city of Trinidad and the Malcon Door. Would you please rise for the pledge of allegiance? Chief Dorios, would you please lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, blood, nation, one under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now the vote opens.
Devono.
Here.
Criego.
Here.
Ogoltry.
Here.
Shu.
Here.
Thurman.
Here.
Williamson.
Here.
Rico.
Here. Just to let everyone know that tonight we have a pretty extensive agenda, so please bear with us. So it's gonna be pretty lengthy, and there's a lot of information to talk about tonight. Thank you. Have you approved the agenda? Council have any changes that they'd like to make? entertain a motion? So moved. Second. We have a fifth and second. Call vote, please.
Devono.
Yes.
Criego.
Yes.
Ogoltry.
Yes.
Shu.
Yes.
Thurman.
Yes.
Williamson.
Yes.
Rico.
Yes. Item three, policy items and staff reports, Mr. Loubert, you have an idea.
I have a nightmare.
Okay? Item four, petitions and communications, General. While she was getting that, I did have one letter here, and I'm not gonna read the whole thing. But it was from a Mr. Robert Arco, this is concerning the ten cent per bag that is being assessed, and he just kind of disregarded that. We have that now, and he felt like we as an organization, not only us, but the county commissioners, and everybody should have spoke up, and a lot of us did, but I think we were overridden by other municipalities and governments, so. Anyway, he just wanted to mention that he was pretty upset that ten cent per bag is being assessed. We have a David Size and Frank Portama. Please go forward.
They signed over two weeks ago.
Oh.
So many papers, God.
Everybody got their books. Okay, item five, consent agenda approval. Five eight, approval of regular meeting minutes of January the seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-three. Item B, appointment of Christopher Frank to the historic Main Street order. Is Chris here tonight?
Yes, sir.
Thank you for being here. Item C, appointment of going lodges to the Arts and Cultures Advisory Commission. Are you here?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you for being here. Well, around that, do you have any council, have any questions for the other one then? Thank you. Item D, resolution designating a representative of the city to the FPGA Board of Directors and an alternate representative to the same. Steve Crowe will be our representative, and Linda Villo is our alternate, and that's for the gas industry that your association will belong to. Item E, resolution authorizing sale of historic movie posters recovered from the Fox West Theater Collection, and there are duplicate copies. And they are just dup- because there are some of the, there are actual originals, but they're duplicates, and that's the question that maybe some people might have. We're not selling off any replicas or anything like that, but just originals, but there's two of each. Item F, approval of the bills in the amount of two million, one hundred ninety-three thousand, nine hundred ninety-nine dollars. Item G, approval of the payroll, January twenty-one, two thousand and twenty-three to February the third, two thousand and twenty-three, in amount of four hundred twenty-four, four hundred twenty-four thousand, nine hundred ninety-nine dollars and ninety-four cents. entertain a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Call vote.
Devono.
Yes.
Criego.
Yes.
Ogoltry.
Yes.
Shu.
Yes.
Thurman.
Yes.
Williamson.
Yes.
Rico.
Yes. Item six, public hearings. Six eight, public hearing for consideration of ordinance, granting local landmark designation to property described as Cherry's West Edition, part of block seven and eight, City of Trinidad, Los Angeles County, Colorado, that would be our City Hall. Hearing is now open. Ms. Hall, what do you have, please?
Mayor, city council and staff. I'm just gonna share some photos with y'all that the fire chief brought, found in the fire. Pass those around.
This is prior to.
This is some very old photos of City Hall.
Oh, yeah.
And. Just wanted to let you look at the, what City Hall used to look like in the sixties and then prior to that, and let you know that Historic Preservation Commission had reviewed this application and found it complete. I have our landmarking plaque that would go on the front of the building, and as you know, the, if this was accepted as a local landmark, we can apply for grants for the exterior facade. Do you have any questions as far as landmarking?
And just for the audience's information is that the landmarking not only applies to the facade, not to the inside, because when it burned in nineteen, was it eighty?
It was, yeah.
That the outside, they may be intact, but the interior was restored, and that is the reason for the just actually being designated for the historical landmarks.
Yes, sir. That is correct.
Any other, any other questions?
I just, there's no other ramifications of landmarking the building as far as, I'm sure not insurance or anything else. Would there be, would the obligation?
Yes, you got it, but as far as, I mean, we'd hope that it would be landmarked forever, but if it turned out that this didn't want to happen, it would just go before a hearing, before Historic Preservation, to unlandmark it. But as far as insurance requirements go?
That's historic buildings. I don't, I don't think landmarking and historic buildings are the same thing, but if you're designated a historic building, there are certain special clauses in the.
Clauses that apply, and we also wanna consider, if we did remake the facade or repair it, we want to make sure it's somebody that's very well versed in historic preservation. So as far as insurance concerns, I'd have to check on that. I don't believe it would be.
Ms. Ogoltry, you're online, is there any questions that you might have?
I don't have any questions, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions from council? No question, okay? Thank you. Anyone virtually or in the audience wants to speak for or against a consideration of the ordinance? Hearing none? Hearing is closed. Item six eight one, second reading of an ordinance, granting locally landmark designation to property described as Cherry's West Edition, part of block seven and eight, City of Trinidad, Los Angeles County, Colorado. City Hall, entertain a motion?
Second.
Second.
Any further discussion? Call vote, please.
Devono.
Yes.
Criego.
Yes.
Ogoltry.
Yes.
Shu.
Yes.
Thurman.
Yes.
Williamson.
Yes.
Rico.
Yes. Item B, public hearing for consideration of ordinance, increasing liquor license application, renewal and permit fees. Hearing is now open. Discussion, Ms. Garrett.
This is, this will be the third time we've discussed, if you have any questions for me, I'm happy to answer, but essentially what we're doing is raising, proposing to raise the cost of liquor license application and permit fees, so that the city may recover our actual cost of this money. It's been a number of years since we've increased fees, and so we're long overdue. They're within the statutory limits that, so that we're allowed to collect.
Okay. Questions from council?
Frank, do you have your packet for that one, the good license that we're doing tonight? Just a visual would be good, so people could see.
I do have one question, is that in the background, I know on the bottom end it shows the change to seventy-five dollars, but in the background information above, it's still showing a hundred dollar for the special gas. Is there any reason why it's still at that?
That's because that's the allowable dollar amount. So the ordinance itself is proposing seventy-five, but the allowable maximum is up to a hundred.
Seventy-five to a hundred, that's reasonable, okay.
So I just wanted people in the audience to see this is one liquor license. This is what we have to do for hearings, and a lot of this is, a hundred percent of it is staff time. So, you know, I just want to make sure the public understands it's a justifiable request to you.
Correct. So to add to that, liquor licenses are reviewed not only by my staff, but we also have physical inspections that are done on the property. Our building inspector visits property, we solicit that the health department to go in and inspect and require responses from them, the fire department, and also our police department, so it's a number of physical inspections as well. It's not just me looking at paperwork.
Yeah, and liquor information changes every year. Matter of fact, last week, we were at an event in the state and just saw in this information that there was, they're looking at more liquor.
Every year.
Every year, every year.
Every year. The industry is very vocal, and so every year you'll see changes proposed.
Very, very likely, okay. Anyone in the audience wants to speak for or against the consideration of the ordinance? Hearing none? Hearing is closed. Second reading of an ordinance, increasing liquor license application, renewal of permit fees, entertain a motion? So moved. Second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Call vote, please.
Devono.
Yes.
Criego.
Yes.
Ogoltry.
Yes.
Shu.
Yes.
Thurman.
Yes.
Williamson.
Yes.
Rico.
Yes. Item C, new hotel and restaurant liquor license application filed by Gallagher LLC, doing business at, at Mikey's Sports Bar and Grill at two thirty-one East Main Street. Hearing is now open, and do we have some representatives?
Yes, sir.
Would you please state your names, and then we'll get you swarming in?
Kenneth Brown.
Kenneth Brown, okay.
Christopher Rogers.
Luke Ray.
So Ken, Chris, Ray.
Yes, sir.
Luke Ray.
Okay. Would you please swarm in?
He's sworn in for testimony about his attributable to the legislature.
Yes.
Turn it over to Mr. Brown.
Thank you, Mayor Kelsey Rivers. Good evening, gentlemen. I'm gonna ask you a number of questions, especially Mr. Brannan's, the primary representative for the applicant in the ninety-one percent owner. I will really be directing my questions at you, Mr. Brannan, and anyone can answer, but so you know, I will be directing my questions at you. So is the mayor indicating that this is a liquor license application for a hotel, restaurant liquor license? Correct. At two thirty-one East Main Street? Yes. And we're talking about, so everyone is aware, the site of the business that was Bricks.
Prior Bricks.
Okay. And if approved, you would be doing business as Mikey's Sports Bar and Grill?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so this week in, is there anything you'd like to tell council? Can you think about, you know, new things you might be doing, or just like a business plan, anything you wanna say?
We've got quite a few things going on, basically our menu is gonna be updated to everything around while we're here. We're trying to include everything local, and I would say that the place next door to us, we're trying to open, like be partners with them for the women and children, trying to do things like that towards all our neighbors. Everything we've been here, I've been here for four months, and we've got to know pretty much a lot of people, and everything's seemed real smooth, and everything's real nice, and it seemed like we're all can work together. Everything moves in one direction. The lady across the street said we, once we were open her business and doubles, and we just, it's like a help for everything around us that we can all join and work together. I like it here, and I'm here, and I mean, it's something I like to be part of, just like we have an old service outside town that brought us here, but that's another part of our business, too, that's gonna bring more to the city, too, part of it. Money for all businesses downtown, but we have four hundred employees that are coming back this way, and we're just trying to gain everything we can in town and around us, and stuff like that.
Okay, thank you. And so, so we're clear, the Gallagher LLC, which is the applicant, that is ninety-one percent owned by you, is that correct? And then ninety percent owned by Michael Gallagher?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And mayor and council, so you know, a nine percent owner does not need to be subjected to a background check? That's why old Mr. Brannan was, had his background checked granted. So, sir, I want to ask you, this is a limited liability corporation in good standing in Colorado. It was formed on or about December ninth of two thousand and twenty-two, is that so, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And it would be the LLC that would be our license if approved, is that correct? Okay, thank you. So, sir, I wanted to ask you regarding your background check, and just to kind of get this out of the way, and I want to please explain this to council. You know, sir, that there was an entry on your record
Yes.
from two thousand and seventeen, I think it was, for a felony charge in San Angelo, Texas. What do you tell council, please, about just the disposition and what happened there?
It basically was a conflict between my partner and another partner had, I wouldn't give up property of my shop until you give me my money. But then it all went to court, we ended up getting it afterwards, you know, the expunge and taken care of, it was a simple, not misunderstanding, but process I had to go through to get something I thought was the right way, which wasn't the right way.
And that case, I believe, was dismissed, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And it's the only entry you have?
In the name of the year.
Okay. Okay. And again, it was dismissed, and can you add?
Yes.
No conviction. Okay, thank you. So I want to ask you, I know that you have in your packet, you have the operating agreement that you have in there, and I believe that's between yourself and also your nine percent business partner, Michael Gallagher.
Correct, yes, sir.
I want to bring to your attention, sir, that in there, it refers back and forth to Mikey's and Mickey's. There was a typo in the name, just so you know.
Okay.
But I wanted to make you aware of that. So I want to ask you, sir, RBG Management LLC is the landlord?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And who owns RBG Management LLC?
Michael Gallagher.
Okay. And is he the one hundred percent owner of that?
We're a medium partner, I mean.
Okay, okay, good, so you're.
I mean, part of forty-eight percent.
Okay. So you guys own the building, and you're the landlord and the tenant. Okay, I just, I knew that Mr. Gallagher had signed for the landlord and you for the tenant. Okay, thank you. And it's, it's a three-year lease with a consideration set forth in the lease agreement, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And the lease begins on December twenty-ninth of two thousand and twenty-two?
Yes.
Okay. So clearly you have the landlord's permission to sell alcohol, and that's established, right?
Yeah, I agree.
So I want to ask you, you understand, sir, if you're approved for this liquor license by city council, you have an obligation to be familiar with the liquor codes for the state of Colorado and the city of Trinidad. You understand that?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Ignorance of the laws, you know?
No, I, I feel with the, in Texas, we have some bar, like a bar and grill down there, so we've got kind of a follow by the same.
Okay.
Same statute of study, just, I know there's stuff that is different here, and it gets adjusted to for what laws and rules are.
And I should have asked you that, you are on a liquor license in the state of Texas?
I'm on a, owner of the, that, yes.
Okay, okay. So, and, and, right, I don't know what the liquor codes are, if it's.
It's probably different, just whatever we have to adjust to, make it right.
Okay. And so are you familiar with TIPS training?
I'm familiar with it, he's, he's more my manager, and he can answer more directly to that question. We, if you don't mind, we have a established settlement with Tom's, TIPS training here in Trinidad, and we are gonna contract him to train all of our employees. So we're gonna furnish that training for all of our employees. Me and my wife, we come from Texas, and most of y'all know my wife from her time here before, Jessica Renee, but Texas has a Texas Alcohol Beverage Commission, which is actually quite a bit more strenuous than Colorado's liquor license as far as serving. So a lot of her training, because she would be the bar manager, a lot of her personal training on top of TIPS, is gonna establish more of that correct serving, not over-serving, making sure people are, you know, give a little bit more of the identifying factors in people with intoxication.
Right.
So.
And not serving juveniles and things like that?
Yes, and not serving juveniles, they will all be marked, because it is an establishment that will be, that will allow all ages. So they even allow in all ages, understandably, a child's not gonna get an X on his hand, but, you know, going to dinner, but as far as after nine o'clock or ten, whenever we decide to actually stop serving food, or kitchen food, we'll still be serving, you know, heatable food.
Okay.
All the way up to closing time. But after nine o'clock or ten o'clock, whenever we decide to close the kitchen, they will be marked, all minors will be marked, if minors are even allowed, we don't, we haven't even discussed that one completely yet. Minors will be marked and identified.
Okay. You understand, in the real circumstances, can whoever sell alcohol to a minor, and it's automatically a liquor violation if that does in fact happen?
It's not clear if you have to figure it.
Right, absolutely. Okay. So I want to ask you, gentlemen, you had circulated, you circulated, or you had circulated, a petition in support of your application, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, good, thank you. I know Luke was more of the petition circulator, he was in the gym one day, circulating the petition. You, you have, I believe, and I know you may not have added them all up, but I believe you have a hundred and six signatures on the petition, and mayor and council members, there were eighty-five, eighty-five valid signatures on the petition, and all of them appeared to be in support, some of them didn't quite indicate. None of them said that they were in opposition to the application for the liquor license, so it was, I believe, a hundred percent in favor of the petition, just so you're aware. But you, you did circulate, or you had circulated the petition.
Yes, sir.
Okay. And you understand, gentlemen, and really you, especially Mr. Brannan, that if you're approved for this liquor license, you have an ongoing obligation to cooperate with all city officials, right?
Yes.
You heard Ms. Garrett when she was up here, and there were a lot of people involved, not only in applications, but in an ongoing fashion, like fire chief, police chief, city clerk. You agree, as you stand here today, that you will cooperate with all city officials with respect to your business and the liquor license?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Is there anything else any of you gentlemen would like to tell council, before we pass it to them?
Well, I think we did put a lot of work into a last little speech we were gonna give, but there's, with the respect due to the work that was put into this speech, you know, there's a few things that I would like for the city to understand about the process of the building. We are gonna keep a lot of the venue, like the old bricks, with having the rented venue in the back, so we'll still be able to do private events, where we'll also allow in different steps from different places, so that we're not just committing to being the only caterers there. So this is a community, we're not here to compete with the other bars, but to collaborate. You know, we're here to all, just make it, I think at one point there was ninety-three bars here in Trinidad.
What's your floor?
There's not like your floor now, it's a whole different story, but, you know, it's definitely something, if there was able to do it in collaboration, there should be no reason we should be, we should not be able to do it in collaboration. We contracted all of our contractors locally, you know, within the South, Southern Colorado region. We look for the growth of Trinidad and the growth of Trinidad's expectations, and that's really what we wanted to get across, to make sure everybody understood when we're coming in here applying for this liquor license.
Thank you.
Yeah.
And I have no further questions. Any questions from council? No, welcome, and thank you for investing in Trinidad.
Thank you. Thank you for being here.
I have no questions, and I wish you nothing but the best of luck. Thank you for investing, absolutely.
Good luck, and hope it runs good. All right, just one question for, are you open five days a week, six days a week, or?
I'm not, I'm working seven days a week. We give it a variety and something that we can go there, that's one thing I run into in town, and I'm used to being in a bigger city, and I'm, you wanna go eat Monday? We eat on Monday, I can't eat Monday here, here, here. I want to ask, like, somebody can have that often, go here every Monday, they won't do every Friday. I just want that to be part of it.
And is this just an evening, opening in the evening, or you have another chain?
We're gonna shoot for eleven to two, and that's not gonna be every day, I mean, of course, if we're not making money, and the town's not profiting, or the town's not benefiting for us being open, we may consider shutting down, maybe have a kitchen cleaning day, stuff to keep us up on par with health and food, and give a break to the hard-working employees we're bringing in. But hopefully, I mean, of course, every business wants to prosper, and business hopefully prospers seven days a week, and that's what we have to look forward to. But we're going from eleven to two, so lunch, lunch and dinner, and then after.
Are you doing a draft, bottle beer cans, the liquor makeup?
We're gonna have all bottles and twelve taps, so, and my wife, Jessica Renee, like again, some of you may know her from her past here. She's got twenty years in the mixology industry of being a bartender in a bar, so she can make drinks that, you know, we're not used to having me make here. So that gives us an extra variety.
I have more questions, but thank you for your investment.
Thank you.
Ms. Ogoltry, you have your end up?
I just have one question, the names of the people who are testifying are Kenneth Brannan and Chris Rogers, is there a third gentleman there who's also testifying?
Luke Ray.
Luke Ray.
What's the last name?
Ray, R.A.Y.E.
Okay, thank you, that's all I needed.
You got it.
Looking forward to your, you being open.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, it's, it's good to see that you guys are trying to open up that place again, you know, when it was open pretty prior to your, to this time.
It was a very busy place, so I didn't see why we cannot continue, because a lot of people missed it.
That's why we're just very busy. Making better, choosing things to mix it up, work.
I think that we should have a pretty viable operation down there, and thank you for the investment, Dan, to the community.
Thank you. Thanks, James.
Anyone in the audience or virtually wants to speak for or against the liquor license application? Hearing none? You have a vote?
I was coming, sorry. I, I just have a question, I'm all for the bar, I'm just wondering if parking had been addressed for, for my question?
You know, I, I think I could speak to that a little bit, so.
Can you come up?
Yes, sir.
Sorry, we have to get everything on the record.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
I think that's a great question, as far as parking.
Yes.
We are working diligently to, for any acquisitions in the neighborhood as well, and the neighbors have been very welcoming, and conversations are being had. I also am under the impression, excuse me, that I think last year was there an ordinance or a petition that was passed for any, anyone on the main, on Main Street where it basically allows any building owners to allow parking on their streets, but it wouldn't be like a hindrance, so to speak. Is that accurate?
I don't, no, no, no.
Okay. Okay. But again, to answer your question, we are working.
Okay, I'm sure you are.
Anything to add to that, is our neighbor exactly west just has agreed to lease out that, that parking lot right next to us as well, too.
Okay, and the parking?
On, on occasion, first, first.
To be restricted?
It's, they okay, you're ready to.
Do you have?
Yes, sir. Okay. So, that's your question. Sir, where do you go to the United States, your name?
My name is Al Bowman.
Thank you.
That was Luke Ray, you answered the question.
Anyone else to speak for or against the application? Hearing none? Or hitting the opposed? Entertaining a motion for a new hotel and restaurant liquor license application filed by Gallagher LLC, doing business at Mikey's Sports Bar and Grill at two thirty-one East Main Street? Entertain that motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Call the roll please.
Debona?
Yes.
Greego?
Yes.
Soboltry?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes.
Soboltry, would you please read the findings?
Sure. In the matter of Gallagher LLC, VDA, Mikey's Sports Bar and Grill, two thirty-one East Main Street, Trinidad, Colorado, eight one zero eight two, new hotel and restaurant. This matter came on for hearing on the application of Gallagher LLC, VDA, Mikey's Sports Bar and Grill at two thirty-one East Main Street in Trinidad, Colorado, for a new hotel and restaurant license before the city council of the city of Trinidad, Colorado, acting in its capacity as the local licensing authority on February seventh, twenty twenty-three, in city council chambers and city hall. The city council having reviewed the application and supporting documents and reports of the city clerk and other city staff, petitions admitted into evidence at the hearing and testimony taken during the hearing makes the following findings. One, the neighborhood consists of that area located within the city's corporate limits. Two, Kenneth Branum, Chris Rogers and Luke Ray testified in favor of granting the license. No other person has testified in favor of or in opposition to the granting of a license. The city clerk's report showed that there are forty-three liquor license outlets within the neighborhood. Of these, there are six fermented malt beverages, beverage off premises licenses, one fermented malt beverage on premises license, one club license, thirteen hotel and restaurant licenses, six liquor store licenses, ten tavern licenses, one arts license, two beer and wine licenses and three lodging and entertainment licenses. Four, the applicant submitted petitions regarding the liquor license application. The petitions contain eighty-five total valid signatures, of which eighty-five are residents or business representatives from within the neighborhood, twenty-one years of age or older, in favor of issuance of a liquor license at this location, no remonstrances were submitted. Five, the applicant through testimony and other evidence made a prima facie showing that the reasonable requirements of the neighborhood are not being met by existing liquor outlets and that the adult inhabitants of the neighborhood favor issuance of the license. Six, based on the evidence presented at the hearing and the investigative materials provided for the hearing, the city council finds that the reasonable requirements of the neighborhood are not being met by the existing liquor establishments, that the adult inhabitants of the neighborhood favor issuance of the license to the applicant and that the applicant officers are of satisfactory moral character. Therefore, the city council of the city of Trinidad, Colorado, as the local liquor licensing authority, hereby approve the application of Gallagher LLC, VDA, Mikey's Sports Bar and Grill at two thirty-one East Main Street in Trinidad, Colorado.
Thank you, Ms. Oboltry. And good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Must need it.
Yes.
Thanks, guys. Onto item D, transfer of ownership of the tavern liquor license filed by DJ Park Cafe LLC at six oh eight Arizona Avenue, formerly Robert Leonetti, doing business as a park cafe. Hearing is now open. Ms. Leonetti, are you here?
I am here.
All right. Start over again, please.
The testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
I know.
Turn on the show.
Thank you, mayor, council members. A woman who needs no introduction.
Good evening, ma'am.
So Ms. Leonetti, you are here for the applicant, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
And you're asking that the license be transferred to your LLC, is that correct?
Correct.
Which is DJ's Park Cafe LLC?
Correct.
Of which you are a one hundred percent owner?
Correct.
An operator, member, okay. And it currently is owned and operated by Robert Leonetti, correct?
Yes.
Okay, and um, you are asking that you have the liquor license put in your name. I know I'm a master of skating, the obvious, but that's that, but just to be clear, that's correct, right?
Right.
In the LLC's name, okay. And ma'am, have you ever been part of this business before?
A couple times, yes.
I had heard that, so that was why I asked the question. You understand how, how the business is run and you, you're familiar. And so, for clear, we're talking about the Park Cafe, correct?
Um, before that was DJ's Hollywood, John McKenzie and I. We owned that together as partnership.
Okay.
From there, we went to the Park Cafe, we bought it, my brother and I bought it from Joe D'Anicio.
Good.
So.
But so we're clear, the business we're talking about is the Park Cafe?
Correct.
At six oh eight Arizona Avenue?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And ma'am, you, I, I just want to say, you submitted yourself for a, a background check. And it came back clear, mayor and council members, so you know. Um, is there anything, and also you have a, a ten-year lease, correct?
Correct.
Commencing January third of two thousand and twenty-three?
Yes.
Okay. And there's a financial interest that was reflected in the packet. Um, so ma'am, I, I want to ask you, you are familiar with the liquor code for the city of Trinidad?
I am.
And the state of Colorado?
Yes.
Okay. And do you, um, you, you understand all the obligations that are associated with having a liquor license, correct? Okay, and you understand that you're responsible for the conduct of the business and everything that goes on in the Park Cafe?
I am.
Okay, good. And then do you have your employees tips trained or will you?
I will. We're going to be going to Tom Davis also.
He's a popular man.
Yes, he is.
Okay. Um, all right, and you understand that if you are approved for this transfer of ownership, that um, you also have an ongoing obligation with city officials? That people who may, you know, from the city need to project you for any reason. But you agree to cooperate with city officials in the conduct of your business and the liquor license?
I do.
Okay. Is there anything you want to tell council before?
I have.
Okay, so thanks, good. Thank you. And mayor and council members, I would say since this is a transfer of ownership of a liquor license, the only questions best set forth in your council communication are the age of the applicant and the applicant being of sufficient moral background. So that's it. Those are met, then your obligation essentially is still approved. So I have no further questions, and I will turn it over to you.
Anyone have any questions?
Just a comment. You know, it's nice to see we've got the new and we've got the established. I mean, the Park Cafe's been around for as long as I can remember. And when you say let's go get a beer at the park, everybody knows it's the Park Cafe. You know, but it's, 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 it's nice that you're carrying on your family's tradition.
Thank you, dear.
It's really nice.
Anyone else?
Congratulations again.
Thank you.
Again. So, do you have any questions?
No, I'm just looking forward to coming in.
Thank you again, and like I said, good luck.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you, ma'am.
Anyone listening in or in the audience wants to speak for or against the transfer of the license? Hearing none? Hearing closed. Entertaining motion for the transfer of ownership of tavern liquor license filed by DJ's Park Cafe LLC at six oh eight Arizona Avenue, formerly Robert Leonetti, doing business, Park Cafe. Entertained motion?
So moved.
Second? Any further discussion? Get in. All the vote please.
Debona?
Yes.
Greego?
Yes.
Soboltry?
Yes.
Shu?
Yep.
Thurman?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes.
I meet an annexation by Maverick, Maverick Annexation. E one public hearing petition for annexation by Todd Myers for the Maverick Annexation at eight fifteen Rother Avenue. Is now open?
Mayor, city council and staff. Um, we are here tonight to go for, forward with the first reading of annexation of Maverick. And um, we bring this petition forward. Uh, this annexation has met all the requirements in section thirty-one dash twelve dash one oh seven. And um, it is, uh, basically, this portion is to annex the two point two one nine acres of the total three point three by two acres parcel. And uh, this annexation is, uh, the owner is Andrew Jackson and we're taking this portion of the parcel that is located in the county and adding it to the existing parcel that they will take and subdivide and uh, utilize for a Maverick gas station. If I may, I want to bring up Bryce Christensen of Kimberly Horn, who is speaking today on behalf of, of Maverick.
Please, please come forward.
Yes, sir. Good evening. My name's Bryce Christensen. I'm at Kimberly Horn. I'm the civil engineering consultant uh, on behalf of Maverick, um, for this application.
Any questions from council?
We're waiting it started.
Or uh, after we get through this process, we'll be able to finish up the design of the, the site there. And um, yeah, I know they're eager to, to move forward as quickly as we can, so. Um, we've got some permitting with CDOT that we have to do. Um, and uh, so we'll be working through that and then the design permitting through the city of Trinidad as well.
Any other questions?
Um, not sure if it really pertains to the annex and of it, but what treatment is going to be done to the, um, waterway that is going to cut through that property?
Yeah, that's a really good question. Um, our intention is to um, convey, uh, build over that, so we'll pipe the, the drainage conveyance line through the site from the west to the east to the CDOT outfall. Um, and then everything onsite will be collected, um, in an onsite stormwater detention system. And we'll have a water quality component that will um, discharge into that pipe that outfalls to that CDOT waterway there. So that'll be like a, a structural covert under the Maverick property. Probably have drainage meant through there. Um, and it's just south of the proposed building, so, you know, we don't want to put any sort of building or anything on that. But uh, yeah, we're going to try and divert that through the site and we'll discharge into it after we detain the water.
Is that connected to that retention on, on?
Yeah, that you see on, by the.
On the side of the interstate?
It, it goes from right there behind the frontier, right under there.
Okay.
Ms. Oboltry, do you have any questions?
No, thank you.
Okay.
Excited to see you.
Yeah. Anyone in the audience or online want to speak for or against the petition for annexation?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. Just a couple of questions. My name is Felix Lopez. I'm the Senate of Council Commissioner. I know this is located in a county property at this point in time, so. As we went through the documentation, I guess a couple of clarifications overall, you know, we support the economic development that it's going to be coming to our city and county. Are the annexation documents implying as well that you're going to be taking care of the, the street would be to the west and to the north of that particular property adjacent, adjacent to, or?
Yes, so Denver Avenue is to the west and North Avenue is, it kind of bisects through the property? Right. So North Avenue will be vacated because the two properties will be, and we're going through a subdivision comparatively. Um, so that's a section of North Avenue between the two properties will be vacated. Um, and then Denver Avenue will be improved. Um, we're, we're actually having to widen it a little bit to, to get truck access into the site. Um, so that road will be improved on, um, in some respects as well.
The, uh, yeah, I think, you know, from the county perspective, obviously, uh, we, uh, we support the, the impact, just some of the questions that, uh, the local residents from that particular, uh, community may have and have called us on, so certainly appreciate that. Would you, um, can we reach out to you from our county administrator to really take a look at exactly and see what we're speaking of, so we can support the process and go forward together? So there's not going to be any vagueness or nebulous perspective within the project?
Yeah, definitely we support that.
And so, uh, that was, uh, you know, one of my questions, again, you had to do with, with the water, uh, process and because we have, uh, well, basically from Goddard North is pretty much county property. All of it is pretty much encompassing the whole thing. So if you would, if you wouldn't mind reaching out to the county administrator so we can understand, and I'm going to give you my card, so we can work through the process and at the end of the day, we are able to answer the questions for our constituents in a, in not only timely fashion, but with the information that is properly moving forward with, with this development.
Yeah, and we'll be working, um, with city staff through the permitting process as well, so, yeah, you want to be involved in that.
But now, well, let's, let's begin again. After this, I'll give you a phone call, I certainly will. Just want to facilitate the whole thing for, uh, if anyone's going to be impacted on the part of the community, okay?
Thank you for the questions, Lopez.
You're welcome. Thank you, and thank you for, uh, giving it to me.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Anyone else wants to speak for or against the application? Hearing none? Hearing closed. On two of the annexation, resolution setting forth that findings of fact and determinations regarding the proposed Maverick annexation, entertain a motion? So moved. Second?
Second.
What, uh, discussion do you have on that? Anything there?
I just want to add that, uh, the, the one affected homeowner has been notified and I have not heard anything from this homeowner. That'll be, um, that would be the parcel that is located just to the left of this annexation. Like if you were facing North Street on the very corner of Denver and North, there's one house that has a driveway that opens onto Denver. And we hope that, um, any impacts will be minimal to this resident. But I just wanted to communicate that we have the outright, um, sent sort of notification to this.
Is that, is that down in the diagram, that's the bump out there?
Yes, sir. And I have, I have some maps to share. You can't see the, the location of that, that house. It's the little bump out, as you said, um, that's located right here. There's two lots with the house is located right there and their driveway does open up to Denver Street. So there should be little impact. However, um, the city does have the three lots behind this residence. And we will probably keep that open and, and not sell it. These three lots located right here are conveyed to the city. These two lots right here is a residence.
So the vacant lot to the west of where the frontier is at now?
That is going to be impacted as well?
Okay, yes, but it, they're vacant right now.
Well, it says trailer park, but I don't know.
No.
I've seen any trailer parks there, uh, like that.
I need any for a long time.
Yeah, that lot is, will be impacted, but that is however, uh, applies inside the city limits.
Um, time to ask a question. Um, Commissioner Lopez mentioned that the line demarcation was from Goddard, but I was under the impression from this that it's North Avenue?
Yeah, it should be. He's talking about Goddard, uh, south and east, southeast.
Okay, I mean, the annex that we're discussing starts in North Avenue, correct?
Right.
Okay.
I don't know why I'm answering.
You just go right.
That's a Maverick.
The southern half of that property is already in the city, so we're just doing the northern. And then the subdivision process going concurrently combines them all and dedicates three lots to the city at the same time.
Any other questions? Ms. Oboltry, do you have any questions?
No, ma'am, thank you.
No, mayor, thank you.
Mr. Downs, you've looked at all this stuff and?
I have, I have.
Any further questions?
I don't have any further questions, Mayor. It's all recording, compiled and submitted, and I don't have any issues with it at all.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any further questions from council? Call vote?
Devono?
Yes.
Creago?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes. Item three, first reading of the ordinance, annexing certain territory to the city and setting a hearing date for consideration of said ordinance to 6:00 P.M. February 21st, 2023. Need someone to introduce?
I'll introduce.
In motion? So moved. Second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Call vote, please.
Devono?
Yes.
Creago?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes. Item four, public hearing amending the zone map by establishing the zone classification of certain land annexed into the city of Trinidad to community commercial. Hearing is not open. Who has information on that place? Should they stay up here?
Yeah. Mayor, city council, the existing property that is placed within the city limits is community commercial. So we're asking that the, the land that is being annexed into the city remain, are added to that community commercial zoning, if that makes any sense to you.
Okay. Does. Any questions on this part? Anyone in the audience speaking for or against? Okay, hearing closed. Ms. Garrett, we have, do we need to take a vote on that amendment or not?
So, mayor, you have a first reading of the ordinance?
Right, that's, that's correct.
So you're able to approve and forward that to public hearing?
All right, then we're down to four eight. First reading of the ordinance, amending the zone map by establishing the zone classification of certain land annexed into the corporate limits of the city and setting a hearing date for consideration of said ordinance at 6:00 P.M. On February 21st, 2023. Someone needs someone to introduce?
I'll introduce.
I'll introduce.
She got it.
A second? The motion?
Motion. I'll make the motion.
The second?
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? Call vote, please.
Devono?
Yes.
Creago?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes. Item seven, unfinished business, we have none. Item eight, miscellaneous business, first reading of the ordinance, amending chapter four, animals, article three, dogs and cats, section four dash twenty-four. Keeping a dangerous dog prohibited of the code of the city of Trinidad to include penalty for violation. Setting a hearing date for consideration of said ordinance to 6:00 P.M. On February 21st, 2023. Need someone to introduce?
I'll introduce.
entertain a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? Do you have any sound of all here?
No, mayor, but I told you I would answer this.
Okay, good.
So this is the ordinance that is enhancing the financial punishment of the fines for the vicious dog ordinance. So it's, it's two parts, obviously. The next one is the one regarding anyone who's in possession of a dog. But anyway, this is the one that enhances the fine for vicious dog.
Okay? Any other questions for? Mr. Downs?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
For, for last, does the owner, the change to the definition of owner that we're proposing next, is that can also apply here so that someone who's in possession of a vicious dog is liable?
Very good question, ma'am, and it already does. So in the vicious dog ordinance, it's either an owner or a person or possession of a vicious dog, but in the dog at large section, that is the one for a person who's in possession of a dog, the ordinance did not mention that. It was only the dog owner.
Okay.
So that's what we're, this one already, your choice is that, yes, ma'am?
Great, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions from council? Call vote, please.
Devono?
Yes.
Creago?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes. Item eight B, first reading of the ordinance, amending chapter four, animals, article three, dogs and cats, section four dash eighteen, dogs running at large of the code of the city of Trinidad to redefine owner and setting a hearing date for consideration, consideration of said ordinance at 6:00 P.M. On February 21st, 2023. Need someone to introduce?
I'll introduce.
In motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Mr. Downs?
I kind of showed my hand. I mean, any questions, I'm happy to answer, but that is what this ordinance is doing.
Yeah. And just kind of brief, maybe the audience as to what this one involves about the possession of the owner?
So, right, exactly. So it is obviously in violation of the municipal code to have a dog running at large. However, the way the ordinance did read, it only said that we could prosecute a person who was the owner of a dog only. And if a person was merely in possession of a dog, and then the dog was running at large, we cannot prosecute that individual. So people are basically coming to court and saying, well, I'm not the owner, I just had the dog, and it got loose, so I was having cases dismissed. So anyway, but it was appropriate also, not just saying I wanted to do this because I was having cases dismissed, but it's appropriate to have a person who's either the owner of a dog or a person who was in possession of a dog to be responsible for that dog and not let it run at large. So that is what this ordinance does. That was probably a horrible explanation, but it adds, if someone is in possession of a dog, so they are responsible for the, only, for running at large. I just wanted the audience to understand. Understood the, the right of change on this. Yes, sir.
Any other questions from council? No, then. Ms. Ogletree, any other questions?
No, there, thanks.
Call vote, please.
Devono?
Yes.
Creago?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes. Item C, first reading of the ordinance, amending Trinidad municipal code, chapter seventeen, streets and sidewalks, article two, numbering of buildings, section seventeen dash twenty-five, size and location of configuration, setting a hearing date for consideration of said ordinance at 6:00 P.M. On February 21st, 2023. Need someone to introduce?
I'll introduce.
In motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? Item, Ms. Down was the one that put this together, but Chief, are you the one that can answer any questions?
I can answer any questions you may have. This is just to make sure we find your address. That's what we're, that's what we're.
So what, so what happens, Chief, if there's, you get a 911, somebody's sick at a residence? How do you, what happens if there's not the correct numbering on residents?
Well, I mean, it's, it's going to delay our response, but luckily, a lot of our guys know the residents and know the numbering, but this will definitely help for EMS, fire, any agency that's going to be responding there, this is going to speed up the response.
I know you have GPS options, but I think a lot of the people, residents, are using more reflective type numbers to be able to indicate exactly, because sometimes Google Maps is not very accurate.
No, sometimes it can be off.
Yeah, so it would be helpful to have reflective illumination on the numbers.
Yeah, it's just so we can find you. That's what it boils down to.
Any other questions?
How does the enforcement of this work, I mean?
So, you know, it's going to be like anything we do code enforcement wise, we're, we're going to notify the owner of, initially, we'll canvass, we know a lot of them that don't or any, so we're going to canvass and notify, and we'll probably do it by some kind of written communication so there's some kind of record that we did that. But the whole thing is just to get the people in compliance. We're not looking to find anybody, we just want to find them.
So Charlie, do you notify, let's say there's a building or residence that's been vacant for years and it's not numbered, do you need to go back and notify the person that?
We'll, we'll try and find the property owner, our person responsible for that property and make sure it's properly numbered.
And if not?
I mean, I guess worst case scenario, the city can do it, but we'll, we'll find a way to make sure that they're, they're numbered.
Question I have, and, you know, I know that the police department, bar department which is a part, it's obvious, but like for the police department as well as the ambulance departments that can't find an address, is there any liabilities that they, that you guys have seen because you've not been able to find it, but they say you should have and often?
Well, it's, thank God, luckily, we've been able to find everybody. So I imagine, you know, many talk to is there, but there's liability for anything that if we fail to act or don't act accordingly or in a quick manner, so liability still would fall potentially, but thank God that's not happened.
Good. So Ogletree, do you have any questions?
I, I'm glad Councilman Williamson asked my question, and I just, I'm glad we're doing it, like doing food delivery sometimes around town, and it's very difficult to find places, so this will be helpful.
Okay. Any other questions? Call vote, please.
Devono?
Yes.
Creago?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes. Item D, authorization to purchase two, 2023, police K-9 vehicles, entertain a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? I think Lieutenant Vanovich, I think, prepared this.
Yes.
What do you have for us?
I have basically Lieutenant Mike Vanovich. Just some explanation of the situation for the cars this year.
Okay.
It's a, it's a supply chain.
This mostly boils down because GSA, which was our preferred choice in the past, has not given us a bill date of when they may or may not do these cars. And it's put us behind the eight ball. Mike's worked very hard and keeps our fleet going, and it's getting to be harder and harder as the miles keep toeing up on those cars to make that happen. So this is looking like our only option at this time to get cars this year. And we kind of explained what we have and what we're trying to do. But at this point, finding what we want and what meets our needs has become very difficult. So when we find it, usually you gotta pounce on it as quickly as you can.
Hmm.
Or the next agency's waiting in line for it.
So at this point, two is the agency that we're able to purchase from?
JR Audio Emergency Vehicle Outfitting, and this is the top there. They had the cheapest quotes on the vehicles that we can actually buy right now. Larry H Miller in Denver also had them, they were just Kansas beat him out just a little bit. Their only stipulation is that they're not, they're not def, by definition, a car dealership. He outsources through a dealership there, then gives a, we get a $2,901 discount from the MSRP, and then we have to outfit through this, through this company, which to me seemed reasonable compared to, if you see at the bottom, in last year's patrol car outfits was $22,900, $291 for a regular patrol car, and I'm asking for the K-9 equipment, which is quite a bit more pricey to keep it out of state.
So what is the actual total cost for both items?
Per vehicle would be $65,809 times two.
Per vehicle, yes.
$65,809 per vehicle.
Yeah. You say you used to get these from where before?
The governor's state award. That's how.
They don't have any more fleet management?
They're already not. Not for the vehicles we're looking for. They, they had the cars, but the cars just don't work for us, especially when we get snowstorms that we get, we can't get anywhere.
What's the, I mean, not every single component, but what's the major component that, it's a lot more due to the required outfit to keep a K-9? What's the major component?
So as opposed to putting a transport for an custody human being in the, in the rear seat of the vehicle, you have a complete retrofit of the rear passenger compartment with a safe K-9 kennel, basically is what it is. And there's also heat alarms, fans, and electronics that will send communication to the assigned officer and the emergency equipment to go off if a passerby sees that the vehicle's in distress and that they need to get the dog out of the car. So those dogs cost us about $20,000, and we don't want to lose one to a tragic accident. So, so basically, it's that, that different type of equipment and electronics that goes into the vehicle that makes it safer for the dogs.
So Ogletree, do you have any questions?
No, I don't, thank you.
Was this expenditure remarked in?
This comes out of our fleet. We just had our meeting weeks ago, so the money's approved for us.
How many dogs do you guys have?
We currently have two patrol and narcotics detention parks.
Oh. Is there any particular reason why we have two?
Well, I mean, you can see through the year report how well they did last year. If I can, if I can outfit one more, I do one more. Those dogs are worth their weight in gold, and when they take it off the streets, I, I want to draw that page in the year report to your attention.
It is also corrected, I'm interrupting, the dog goes with one officer.
Right.
And so if an officer is working one shift, you may want to have another officer on another shift, so you have a dog.
And if I, if I can also add, our two vehicles that we currently have are 2017 model years. They were retrofitted to K-9 units as an afterthought, so they've been on the streets for a little while already. So we purchased the, the equipment to put them in. The vehicles do unfortunately have to run quite a bit to keep the temperature control going, and it puts up the engine idle hours, which puts more wear and tear on the vehicle than actually driving the vehicle. So, and looking at other options and stuff too, starting from square or mile zero and hours zero on the, on the countdown for the vehicles, the smarter option too, instead of going with something used or just switching out one of our other cars. So, and we're talking about 103,000 and 81,000 and like 8,500 engine idle hours, and that's coming from fleet maintenance. I had to pull those numbers for me, so.
So that 130, 130,000, that's complete? There are no additions afterwards?
Cash and?
Oh, yeah, so the vehicle is, so on the, the purchase would be turnkey. I'm going to retrofit some equipment from the pre, cars that we already have, so we're cutting costs on the mobile radios, internet connection, the modems and antennas, and things like that. So we're going to, you know, save a little bit of money, but when we pick the cars up, they're, they hit the streets.
And I know that the, the second dog that you got was just recently purchased, correct? And I'm not sure if I'm correct in how I heard that. One of the reasons for the purchase of the second dog is that the second dog can detect the mushrooms or something like this? I'm not sure.
It's the opposite. The dog that we have could hit on mushrooms, therefore it makes it ineffective on the street now that mushrooms are allowed. So that search would not, would not.
Not a viable.
Yeah, so we have to get another dog.
That's what we're tired of, that mushroom.
Crash. His name is Crash, because he looks like Crash Bandicoot. And he acts like Crash Bandicoot.
Well, you know, I think that the investments in the K-9s has produced some good benefit for the community, and we hear all the time in this.
Even, even the, the purchase of the dog was done through the work that the dogs done.
Yeah. We can hunt truffles now.
When I was looking for the bids, I think it's appropriate that the color of the cars that destroy your gray.
Yeah, that's what, that's what dogs calls it. It's called a scorching gray.
Any further questions? No. Call vote, please.
Devono?
Yes.
Creago?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes. Item nine, council reports, starting with Mr.?
Okay, well, Los Angeles County Veterans Council, Fort Luton Memorial Hall, along Okay, well, Los Angeles County Veterans Council, Fort Wilton Memorial Hall, along with Hometown Holidays, is hosting a father, daughter, mother, son Valentine's dance this Saturday night at Memorial Hall from six to nine. And then I did do a walkthrough with Karen and Matt Willis at Noah's Ark. It was very well organized, clean, and I was very impressed with the facility.
Adding on to that, we are going to have an open house at the animal shelter on February 11th from one to three. So I hope people will come and see for themselves. A picture is worth 10,000 words, so if you look at the shelter, and you, you gentlemen that are shaking your head, please come by if you're in town. We'd like to introduce you to our facility staff and see if we can maybe partner in some events, but, yeah.
Uh, just arts and works have a meeting on 15th, and they're introducing an interim master plan.
Uh, two things, um, several people have approached me about an increase of dead water fowl at Central Park. That's something that maybe we should look at, if there's concern for bird flu or whatever, so.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Williamson, I have an update for that, about that in my report.
And then the only other thing, I attended the library board meeting. It looks like they're planning a lot of really good activities for the summer. Something that I wouldn't know, and it was really popular last year with a lot of families, they're bringing that, um, I forget what it was called, but the foam bubble thing back. I believe it's gonna be here for two days instead of just an afternoon, so a lot of kids really enjoyed that, so. Something to look forward to. Other than that, that's all that I have.
Okay. So Ogletree?
Arts and Culture Met, they have their new art walk pamphlet out that has some additions and corrections. The blue O XO sculpture that was in the roundabout is now permanently at Space to Create. There are some other projects that they're working on and preparing a request for proposals to area artists who would like to design a sculpture for the city. So they've been busy, I'm glad that they got Lauren Rogers on to this evening, and they still need, I believe, two more people on arts and culture, so if people are interested, let the city know.
Do you want to give a report on the action 22, uh, voices and call out a lot of things last week because of drinking?
Okay, so we attended the action 22, uh, I think it was the second through the third.
Today and Friday?
So I started saying Friday. Learned a lot during that, um, visit to Denver. Learned that Denver's basically broken up into a couple categories. Action 22 takes care of the south, east corner, prop 20 is the western slope, and they prop, uh, sorry, uh, the north, the northeast slope is, uh, Pro 15, yeah, Pro 15. So I learned that Colorado's basically broken up into either agriculture or energy. Pick one, and then they have subgroups as far as, uh, transportation, education, and healthcare. And then we did legislative situations, legislative tour to the Capitol. We talked about how to conduct legislation, and I'm part of the action 22 new leadership. I'm gonna learn how to do and write legislative. Also, um, we have a lot of, uh, speakers from across the state. This basically talks about rural Colorado, rural Colorado. Everybody focuses on Denver. I want to know if you guys have friends and family out of town, and you say, yeah, from Colorado, like what part of Denver you live in, and then you have to explain the difference. Not just Denver, it's, it's, most of it is out of, outside of Denver, so, um, a lot of notes, um, I don't know if we can get, we got time to get into them, guys. I'll just hit a couple of them. Legislative, sorry, the Senate, the House Senate was there. Uh, they did a couple of, well, not a couple, they did a lot of, uh, a lot of speakers campaign. We had oil and gas coming through, we had, they talked about drugs, crime, and it's within rural communities. Trying to get a look on crime, the thirties, rural communities across the state. Also, water is a huge issue. Everybody's fighting for water in the state of Colorado. You wouldn't believe how complicated that is. And as far as, further stuff you get, the more complicated water gets, so I learned about that. First agriculture, we had some surprises. We got a shrimp situation here in Colorado. We got some shrimp before officers, so. I was enthused about that, me being for Orleans, I listened in closely about that. We have a lot of stuff for one. Mayor, do you want to jump in?
Yeah, I'll kind of jump in my portion, but we don't kind of tack on to what he was talking about is that the big issue is the water problems at the Colorado River and all the other basins that, the Arctic River Basin and the other basins that have problems with, and we had on Friday a premier water engineer and water attorney. His name was James Eklund, and he kind of showed us, talked about the processes and all the issues that the western part of the country is dealing with right now, from, pretty much from Colorado all the way to the Pacific West. And they're concerned, and all of these compacts that have been in existence for many, many years. The controlling factor, what's interesting is that, I don't know if anybody's kept up with it, but in the past, they were supposed to have it done by last Tuesday. The five different areas were supposed to come to an agreement. Only four foot fourth the effort to come up with some kind of agreement. The fifth one was California because they are, um, they are the controlling source of the water. You know, they, they're primary as far as water's rights are concerned. So basically they said, we'll do what we, we draw our own ways. So it's kind of disturbing that they are in that position, but it is what it is. And if there's just a lot of concern, concern with, with water. There was a discussion on, um, crime. The people that were giving the presentation, to be honest with you, I was very disappointed. They didn't have a good question and answer afterwards. Basically, it was everything that I think everybody probably already knew, and then a few things maybe knew, but I think that should have been, I think that'd be half an hour. But they talked for 25 minutes, and then he took two, three questions, and that was it. But, you know, what I was looking for was input from myself and other people as to, what kind of answers? Is there to some of these problems that we're having with, uh, with the drugs and just crime in general? So I was kind of disappointed in that, in that aspect, but there were like, Councilman Thurman was saying, you know, it was good in the other areas that they're talking about, and if there's anything else that maybe he, he might have missed. You know, energy was a big thing. I had a good question for him, you know, there were some of the energy people, and some of the gas industry was there. XL, XL Energy was there.
Black Hills.
Black Hills Energy, and I don't know if anybody's read, but it came out that they are now having, somebody's experimenting with taking old mines and putting, um, battery, and, um, putting energy into storage, energy, energy, energy storage. And I asked them the question if they thought that there was any potential with that, and of course, one guy jumped up and said, there's no potential. So I thought, well, you know, looking back years, you know, 20, 15 years ago, they're talking about, uh, you know, solar energy, wind energy. And they put the capstone on that way back then, but look where we are today. So I really believe that they just, you know, feel threatened by any kind of new energy source or storage source that's out there, so. That's my personal view. I also attended the Fort Carson Working Group a couple of weeks ago. That is, they, people from Fort Carson come down, they kind of talk about what's going on, and I knew that they've got some major stuff coming in, large helicopters coming in toward the end of the month. They're coming out of actually the airport in Nevada, I believe. And anyway, they're, they're gonna be whirling around our area for, I don't know, about 10 days, I guess? Around 10 days. I attended the Main Street Open for Business at Fox Theater. And basically what that was is Rick Arcia from Bola was there, telling us that we have received that, that new $600,000 grant that is out there, and I think he was there, didn't he?
Yes.
I think he was there. But anyway, he was there, and a few other people from Bola were on site as well, and a lot of community members, commissioners were there, so that was good to see. I also did a proclamation to the District Board of Education, that was for the Board of Education Month, that District Number One. This is one item of concern. Mr. Ruber and I were asked to go to the Mitchell Museum. And we toured the museum, and Allison Shoemaker was showing us what happened with that fire next door. And it actually came close to entering into the Mitchell Museum. There's an area there that you can actually see daylight on that south, or that east end. And they did get, they sustained damage as far as smoke goes, but they did, uh, the smoke did come in, and they were, they had hired somebody to come in with some kind of equipment to take that smoke smell out. They actually had a, an event, I guess, there were two that was scheduled. And one of them, and one of them, they actually had to postpone or cancel.
But this is a best, yeah.
Due, due to the smoke problem that existed there, so. I think that there's something that maybe I think that maybe we should consider, uh, because we talked to her, because they do have a, some, some, uh, some costs with
Medication?
Not with medication, but costs, we asked them what, what their energy costs were per month. So that's one thing that I think that we may want to consider to try to help them, but they also have a $2,500 for their insurance deductible. So these are things, and Mr. Ruber and I talked about that, so I think that we, I think it'd be, a few of us try to maybe help them out. I mean, really, I would possibly, so, you know, give that some consideration, we need to consider however necessary, but I think it'd be good to, because it's, it's a it's a building that needs to be, be so developed, where we can try to help them out. I also attended the Aguanas 100th Anniversary, that was held at the Space to Create Project. And there were quite a few people here that night. They had the international president here, they had the state president, other officials from Aguanas there, just a lot of people. Probably good, what, 100 people or maybe better?
Yeah, that's what I understand, absolutely.
Yeah, so it was, it was a very nice event. Uh, one thing I wanted to mention is that, uh, when we were in Denver, they mentioned that Senate Bill 123, that there are some things in there that I think that may apply to us, so I think we checked into that.
Senate Bill 123?
Senate Bill 123.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, the other thing that I took away is on Friday, at the action 22, there was a, one of the previous representatives, run out, went, I guess, and picked up a, this document. And this is the status of House bill as of eight o'clock that morning. And if you look at that, there's all of these double sided, all the bills that may be introduced so far. Anyway, Kevin Gannabrantum was this previous senator, Senate President a couple of years ago. And I asked him how many bills each one of these, because there's 100 between the House of Representatives and Representatives, a total of 100. And each one of those representatives, whether it's Senate or just a representative, can put forth five bills each year. And I asked him, how can you justify and do justice to, last year they had over 600 bills that they had to consider? How can they really do justice to any of them? And on top of that, Mike Beasley talked to us shortly after, and he said that this year, they're behind schedule. Because one of the reasons is that they've lost a lot of attorneys, which they house them down in the basement, so if you need a
John Kerry ideas. I do not work in the basement.
I mean, they have attorneys that are down in the basement, and they go up and, uh, they get a, one of the legislators can just write up even a two sentence thing, say, you know, I want this to be purple instead of red. They give a two liner, they give it to the attorney, and they make a bill that's probably 40 or 50 pages long. So But anyway, just wanted to let you know, and the other thing that they did, and I agree with me, but, uh, to show you, but the process of what a bill takes, uh, from A to Z, and all the committees that it's got to go through and everything else, it's, it's, it's a lengthy process. So wondering how they get any of this done, to me, it's unimaginable. I always, and I always say that a lot of these bills, um, have too many unintended consequences, and they do. They really do have a lot of unintended consequences. I've taken the time to look at these, and we're gonna be talking about some of these. To be honest with you, I've looked at, I've looked at all these bills, and I'll bet you 40% of these bills that are in this document are junk. And I talked to Mike Beasley today, he concurred with me, he said, I couldn't notice. He said, they're, they're just garbage.
Yeah.
Because I don't know if they just want to get themselves something to do, or be the attorney something to do, I don't know.
The attorney system.
Anyhow, it's, 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 it's very discouraging to know that that many bills can be processed in beginning, first part of January to, was it May, the early May?
Depending on, yeah, yeah.
So it's, it's a very short window for them to process 600 bills and to do justice to any one of them.
Right.
Go through all the processes, so, uh, that was my report. Mr. Ruber?
Yeah, just a few things tonight, Mr. Mayor. Good news and bad news, what do you want first?
Good news and bad news?
We'll start with the bad news. So, um, to Councilman Williamson's point earlier, we, we do have an issue going on with our avian friends right now where there's suspected bird flu in our community. So people may have seen personally some sick or dying animals at Central Park. We're seeing some feedback on social media about that as well. So Colorado Parks and Wildlife is over the jurisdiction that pertains with our wildlife friends, so they are on it, they know about it. And we're, we're working with them in tandem. So I just want to let you all in the community know, uh, they have incredible guidance on CPW's website about protocol. So people really should be staying away from a suspected animal, uh, and washing their shoes. There's a whole bunch of protocol that I think people can educate themselves on in dealing with that. But the, the big thing is CPW is asking us to close Central Park while they do their investigation. So they're testing animals right now to confirm that it is avian flu. Uh, so we will be closing the park temporarily. Uh, we are working with the college to ensure that that doesn't affect their practice for their sports teams. We'll be offering South Park as a, as an option instead. And then we'll be posting signs on the park as well, and it's, it's really just for general health and protection of our public, so less don't hit me, but
I know. I'm thinking, you know, I can smuggle food into the ducks. Sorry, just kidding.
So that'll probably happen tomorrow, and like I said, we'll have signage and encourage people to stay away. Once we get the confirmation from CPW confirming whether it is or not avian flu, we can discuss where to go from there. So just wanted to let everyone know that. I want to give kind of a commendation to our snow crews. We had a major snow event in our community. And I know that we get a lot of feedback from our residents that we're not doing a good job with our plowing. But I just wanted to commend them because not only were they out there plowing all night, getting very little sleep. They spent the entire weekend plowing, including covering a lot of our parking lots that are being asblemed. But they were, there were countless instances where they were actually bailing people out who had gotten stuck in the snow. So in this case, yes, some of the plowing might not have happened as quickly as we would have liked, but that's because our road crews were assisting some stranded residents who got stuck and really went above and beyond to do that, so I really want to thank them for helping keep our community state, their diligence.
I did get, I had a one resident who appreciated that.
Good, good. Yeah, and I, I, we don't have that many snow events, so it really doesn't make sense for us to invest millions of dollars into some snow removal equipment, so, um, we're trying to strike that into some snow removal equipment, so we're trying to strike that balance of keeping our community safe. But I do want to mention that our Public Works Department is exploring magnesium chloride as an option, which is used elsewhere in the state. And not only does it melt the snow, but it also leaves a layer, so it's preventative for future snow events as well. So we'll be testing that out in the near future. We've already got it on hand, and hopefully that'll be a better mitigation for snow removal going forward. And then the last thing I have is I'm very excited to announce that we have extended an offer, and also they accepted our offer for a development services director, so our planning manager position. Her name is Kiwi Williams. She's a local here and an architect. And I think she's going to be a tremendous fit for the community and really get us some, some great support down in our development services area. With that, we've also hired a new building inspector to replace Kent Robinson, who retired, and his name is John Wilkinson. So John will be starting next Monday, the thirteenth, and Kiwi will start on the twenty-first. So really good to see that department finally getting the resources that they need. Thank you to Chris Hall for really stepping up and just being, being a tremendous asset to the city and, and working overtime to really keep us moving forward with development. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mayor, Councilmembers. I just have one thing that I want to address, and that is a kind of a recurring issue. And it, it really comes to my attention because you have two letters at your seating places tonight regarding Noah's Ark. But what I want to confine my comments to is the question of whether or not Councilwoman Correjo has a conflict by being on the Board of Directors for Noah's Ark and being a member of City Council. And I want to, I, I would just want to say, you know, to dispense with any mystery on the subject, Councilwoman Correjo does not have a conflict by being on both boards of directors. And I want to just say, you know, very briefly, everybody understands that all of you are encouraged to serve on various boards and commissions. And clearly Noah's Ark is kind of a different animal. It's sort of a high word, if you will, but it is the city's animal shelter. And insofar as it's the city's animal shelter, it's certainly appropriate to have someone in a minimum who would be a liaison to that organization. But simply having that liaison be a member of the Board of Directors does not mean that it's a conflict of interest. And in fact, it's kind of the opposite of a conflict of interest. You think about a conflict, and a classic example, let's say a judge who has personal interests in one, on the one hand, so that they can't be fair in judging a matter that kind of overlaps that personal financial interest. They can't do what they can't be fair because of those conflicting interests. When a person is an advocate for two separate things, it's not a conflict. And in fact, what really the ultimate distillation of this issue, other members of boards and commissions might say, "Well, Noah's Ark has an unfair advantage" because they have a council member on the Board of Directors in, in the form of Councilwoman Correjo. They have an advantage because she's got too good of a position for being too good of an advocate for that city board. Again, it's not a conflict. And I know that there are issues regarding Noah's Ark. Everyone is aware of that. He reads the paper. But again, I just want to say that Councilwoman Correjo does not have a conflict of interest. And I also want to say that in anything quasi-judicial, in anything budgetary, in anything that is going to affect Noah's Ark before council, Councilwoman Correjo is going to step aside, is not going to vote, is not going to try to influence other members of City Council. So I just, you know, again, this has been coming up for years, and I doubt my comments are going to really dispense with this, but I hope they will help to quell the controversy. It is not a conflict of interest.
Thanks for bringing that up, because I was going to mention, but I'm glad that any member that I could have known about.
Absolutely. Thank you. That's all I have.
One other item, just for the audience, is that, just a reminder that on Thursday at six P M. at the college, I will give you my state of the city address, so if you guys want to come and hear what has been going on and plans for the future, please come, six P M. It's in the Pioneer Room.
Refreshments?
Okay, on to, uh, item, item eleven, executive session for the purpose of determining positions relative to matters. That may be subject to negotiation, developing strategy for negotiations and or instructing negotiators under CRS Section twenty-four dash six dash one two. For E, additional funding request, entertaining motion, second.
Second.
Any discussion matter? All vote please.
Debona?
Yes.
Correjo?
Yes.
Ogle Tree?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Rico?
Uh, yes. Give time to everybody leaving, and time for Tom to get his stuff.